Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I hope that you had an opportunity to appreciate all the wonderful art that we have in our halls today. I want to thank Lisa Kaplan and Holly, one of our artists, for sharing your work with us. And I know that it's going to be appreciated by the public that comes in too. So, thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
We are going to have call to order and roll call please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Metina?
Here.
Councilmember Farlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
And Mayor Turner?
Here.
Moving on to pledge of allegiance. Lisa, would you start us with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to acceptance of the agenda and urgency items. Do we have any urgency items? No.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are assumed to be non-controversial and routine, not necessitating any discussion. However, they can be pulled from the consent agenda at the request of a council member or if the public would like to speak to any item. Today we have waive reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration, approve minutes of the city council regular meeting, May 1st, 2018, receive and file the fiscal year 2016-2017 comprehensive annual financial report for the city of Lakeport, approve the 2017 flood damage insurance settlement agreement, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, and adopt a resolution calling for and providing for and giving notice of the general municipal election to be held in the city of Lakeport, county of Lake, state of California, on the 6th day of November, 2018, for the purpose of electing two city council members, each to hold office for a term of four years or until their successors are elected and qualified, requesting consolidation of that election with the state general election, and requesting approval of the Lake County Board of Supervisors for election services to be provided by the Lake County Register of Voters. Would the council like any of these items removed? No? Is there anybody who would like to speak to any of these items? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public presentations and requests. We have citizens input. Do we have any requests for citizens input?
I didn't receive any.
Okay. Citizens input is a chance for members of the public to speak for three minutes about something that's not already on tonight's agenda but is under the jurisdiction or the purview of the city council. And so, in the future, anyone who wants to speak at citizens input, we ask that you fill out a slip of paper beforehand and give it to Kelly so that she can give it to us and we can announce you. We'll move on to the presentation. Present a certificate of appreciation to the Clear Lake Trowel and Trellis Garden Club for their civic beautification project at Westside Community Park. Who do we have accepting that? Come on up. Thank you very much. For anyone who's not familiar with Westside Community Park, it's one of our flagstone recreational areas. It's been undergoing development and flourishing for a number of years. And it has done so, at the most part, because of community groups and members who are willing to donate time, money, and energy to keep it looking beautiful and to develop it further. So, thank you very much for your efforts and for all that you gave.
I wanted to just tell you that we had a lot of people working on this and I want to thank the Kiwanis who helped us shovel gravel on that day when we were really doing a heavy manpower. But the people that worked on the project were ages, the physical labor, 65, and the eldest was 92. And the 92-year-old, I was very worried. She kept saying, "Oh, no, we can't have this very rude here." And here she is, pulling Mary Seacord. And anyway, we've got a great group there and we're so excited to have this amazing park. Joel and Ron Raits and Dennis Rollins have ramrodded, spearheaded, got the community involved. And please, thank them so much. And everybody who goes to Grilling on the Green and everyone else. So, thank you very much. We're glad to be helping.
Well, thank you. You did a lovely job there. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's not my phone. I took a lovely picture, but you were both very worried.
Do I take a picture?
You need to get in there too, didn't you?
Kiwanis has helped out too, once you get in the picture.
Yeah, you should get in the picture too.
I was only the photographer.
Just hand it.
Okay, Nick, you have to use this camera for the Trowel and Trellis ladies. I wore my old best look.
That's good. Thanks. Thank you. Keep asking.
We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Proclamation. Presentation of a proclamation designating May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Police Week, and publicly saluting the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Officer Chouet?
My doing it?
This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport to recognize National Police Week 2018 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Lakeport. And whereas, there have been 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016, resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 360 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 129 officers killed in 2017 and 231 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty was honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2018. And whereas, the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 13th through 19th. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags shall be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby designate May 13th through 19th, 2018, Police Week in the city of Lakeport, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Well, I want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing Police Week and Police Memorial Day, which is actually today. It's a difficult job that our officers do out there every day on the streets, putting their lives on the line, never knowing when they may be assaulted or someone may try to kill them. So, I really appreciate the city's support and the council recognizing this week and today as Memorial Day for police officers. So, thank you. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next presentation. Lisa Kaplan from the Middletown Art Center will give a presentation on the Resilience Art Project exhibit.
Thank you. Can I just ask, do I need to face this way? Can I face always? Does it work here? Should I face this way? I hope you guys enjoy the back. So, the Middletown Art Center was awarded... Well, wait a minute. First, let me thank you. Let me thank Wilda in particular and Margaret for inviting us to put work up here. Because the arts should, and now we are making known that they are, they should be part of everyday life. Everybody should see them. Everybody should enjoy them. More people should practice them. Because they're fun. And because they tap into that part that's inside us, which is the creative child, the joy, the problem solving. And also, just life force. That's what creativity is. And so, what we did at the Middletown Art Center, which was founded in 2015 in March, and it's an offshoot of Eco Arts, the Sculptural Walk, which many of you are familiar with. What we did was we opened the Middletown Art Center in March and we all were evacuated in September. And we had at the time 60 arts members and 28 of us lost our homes and studios and/or places of work. That's pretty drastic. I'm one of those people. And our response, rather than filling up into sadness, was rather to say, "No, we're going to rise and we're going to persevere and we're going to join together and create a wonderful place where we can all come together and celebrate being here, even though it's hard, and persevere through our recovery and support one another, even though it's difficult." And what we did with the Resilience Project, well, I will admit that I was the person who was pushing the motivation behind it. And it comes from a very personal place, which is that, you know, losing your house is a big deal. Losing your artwork is devastating. I lost 40 years of artwork. I lost documentation. I lost sketches. I lost everything except four pieces, which happened to not be at home. And that's pretty intense. And so, every day, when I would drive to MAC or wherever, I would look out the window of my car and I would notice things. And I would say, "Wow, look at the contrast" between all of those trees that are now charred, reaching in all different directions with all these straggly edges and their bones sticking out, and the color of the earth. And the ones that remained, which are green. And the yellow flowers that are coming up. And the red hills that I can see. And the ochre hills that I see. And then look at that patch of green over there where nothing happened. Or look at the way that all of those pines have now become like silver porcupine needles. And this is how I survived all of this time of recovery, is by finding beauty in the change that was happening around us. And seeing it as an opportunity to reframe tragedy and even to reframe disruption into seeing the resilience and the creative force that nature was demonstrating. And thus, the Resilience Project is made as a mirror, using nature as a mirror for our own recovery. Because when we look at the resilience of nature, we can find the resilience inside us. And so, we wrote the grant as a team. I had a fabulous team, including Karen Turcot, who founded Eco Arts of Lake County, who many of you may know, and her husband, and many others, and began reaching out to people like Wilda and Margaret and the Lake County Arts Council and the Woodland Community College and Lake County Land Trust, among others. Oh, and Adventist Health, of course. Creating partnerships and ways for us to collaborate, for us to receive support, if not monetary, then in outreach, so that more people would know about our classes. Because the classes were only $5. With the help of the grant from the CAC, the California Arts Council, we were able to provide art classes for $5 every weekend in photography, poetry, printmaking, and painting. So that if you didn't like one medium, you could try another. So that you could try some and you could say, "I don't like this, but I'll try and I'll come back." And people like Holly came back several times. People like Holly Green, whose beautiful work you'll see in the hall, came several times. People like Georgina, who participated in the writers workshops, came many, many times. Georgina also went to painting classes and also to writers workshops. We were all affected by the fires. Because whenever you drive through Lake County, the environment has changed. The economy has changed. Our council, our county, has been affected deeply. The chambers, the courthouse, where my radio works, you know, the plumbing condition. It's all been affected so, so deeply. And that trickles down our schools. Middletown, the schools have been affected very, very deeply. So again, what we did was we used this opportunity to create a year-long project that culminates in exhibits countywide. And this is our first one. Thank you so much for doing this with us. And this will be one that will... We will actually continue this, not as part of the Resilience Project, but as part of our partnership. We will continue to bring art here. And we'll be in the chamber. We'll be at the Adventist Health Hospital. We'll be at Main Street Gallery. We'll be at MAC. We'll be at Clear Lake City Hall and at Four Family Winery. That's just for this project. So, one of our main goals is, in fact, to extend the reach of the arts and to make arts affordable and accessible to everyone. And a $5 class, man, you cannot beat that. That's a dollar an hour. For stellar, stellar instruction, people who have masters in arts and who are accomplished artists. And you can see the results of their... What we expose our participants to, you can see the results of that on the wall. Yes, people come with talent, but we help them to channel that, to funnel that, and to create more, and also to dialogue with others. And when we dialogue with others, we grow. So, that's the Resilience Project. Next year, we hope to open... No, next year, we will be opening the Sculptural Walk again in May or June of 2019. But the Sculptural Garden, that is to say, the Trailside Park is mightily changed. It's a whole different environment, you know. There's no trees there. So, there's no architecture for the rafters. There's no... The ground is different. There's water in all kinds of places where there weren't water. So, it's a new environment for us to work in. And we live in a new environment. Back about me for a second. My house, after almost three years, is finally going to be done, probably within a month. My studio, which I miss dearly, is not going to be done for maybe six more months. Because the whole process of rebuilding, of insurance, budgeting, and everything is extremely difficult. And so, again, I come back to art. Art, aside from seeing these things out of my window and reframing them as aesthetics, I've also been creating art. And all of my work has been about the fire. I don't even mean for it to be. It just works out that way. And so, if it works out that way for me, it can work out that way for other people too. Art is a wonderful way to heal. It's a wonderful way to appreciate, to appreciate what we have, to appreciate our dreams, to appreciate what we see, and to appreciate each other and each other's talents. Along with all these shows, we also have a chapbook that's coming out soon of poetry. I would say that there are 25 poets represented in the book. It's probably going to be over 50 pages long and it will include prints, some of them that you see on the wall. It's fantastic. It's beautiful. And that will come out when we open our exhibit at Middletown Art Center on the 26th of May, I hope. But that will be available in any case. So, Middletown Art Center has been like this incredible little flower that just keeps on growing and that is creating... It's growing beyond what I even expected. And we now have field trips and have received some funding from the Wine Alliance to bring kids from all over the county just to subsidize. We can't do the... We can't support the whole trips, but we're subsidizing trips. And it's so much fun to have these kids come and see art in like a real museum sort of environment and to receive education. You know, we talk to them about the principles of art and design. We ask them to say what they see. What do you see? What do you feel? What is it that you're perceiving here? And it's that voice, our individual voices, that come through in our art-making, that come through in our speech, that come through in our actions, just like all of your actions to decide, to be the city manager, to be the mayor, to participate as a council member, to be a poet, to be an artist, to be a planner, to be a store owner, to be a cameraman or a reporter, or any of these things. All of these things is when we find our own voices that we do those things and we can find our voices. We can hone our voices through the arts as well. Anybody, whether you're an artist or not, you can hone your handwriting, your voice, through the arts. And my hope also, our hope at MAC, is as we grow, is also to open the arts up to more children who are growing, so that they... The arts are part of their lives and maybe they'll pursue careers in the arts, which there are multiples beyond being a painter or a sculptor. You can be a photographer. You can be a videographer. You can design cars. You can design interfaces and phones. You can design fashion. You can be a makeup artist. You can do graphics. Graphics are everywhere. There are so many careers and they do not have a negative impact on our environment. And they're wonderful and they ask us and cause us to tap into our child, the play, the innovation, the creativity, and the life force all the time. So, it's very healthy, actually. So, my hope is that as we expose more kids to the arts, they'll go off to college, they'll work a little bit, and they'll come back. And they'll bring that back to us. They'll bring their skills back to us. Because I think we're not going to be able to thrive here unless our kids keep coming back. So, I'm helping in one way. At Middletown Art Center, we're helping in one way to try and hone these creative talents that kids have, expose them to the various aspects so that they appreciate themselves in that way and come back and share it with all of us. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share our art here and to speak to you about the Resilience Project.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing your art. It's been a joy to work or to see what you do at the Middletown Art Center over the years. And I appreciate how you've taken your talents and your gifts and in the face of community disaster, you've turned the Middletown Art Center into a place of healing through a venue that people don't usually think about.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
We're going to move on to council business. Approve the license agreement between the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake for behavioral health staff to work out of the Lakeport Police Department Station.
Mayor and council, what you have before you tonight is a draft or a contract agreement with the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake to have behavioral staff, crisis workers, working out of our Lakeport Police Station and responding to calls in our vehicles with our police officers. We've been working with the behavioral health staff heavily over the past couple of years to try and improve responses to persons in need of behavioral health services. And as cited in the staff report, we know that about 60% of behavioral health clients do have initial contact with law enforcement before they're taken to emergency rooms. And a lot of the calls regarding these folks that need assistance come through our dispatch. And officers are dispatched to respond to those calls and provide whatever service they have. And then, the general procedure is that we would transport them to the hospital, where behavioral health would then be called out and come out there and provide service. But with this agreement, we're going to be able to have their crisis workers actually working in our station and hopefully be able to respond directly with us on a lot of these calls. So, that's kind of the summary of it. The county board of supervisors approved this a couple of weeks ago, I believe. And it's already been signed by the county. So, at this point, we're asking that the council support it and direct that the city staff sign the agreement. And we will start getting it in place. There is some more work that we need to do regarding background clearances that's required by the Department of Justice. Anytime you have... Even though the county crisis workers are already fingerprinted and backgrounded, because they're coming into another law enforcement agency where they're going to have access to criminal offender record information, we're required by law to do our own background clearance. So, that's going to take about another month to finish. And then, hopefully by the end of 1st of July, they will be assigning staff to report to our ops, do their work there, and then be available to respond with us. So, other than that, I can answer any questions. But that's the summary of it.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
The one thing that occurs to me that if you are... It seems like you might be circumventing maybe a possible hospital visit by taking action immediately with behavioral health and not have to send them to the hospital and then behavioral health heads out there. And it seems to me that there should... That that would probably create some kind of cost savings to someone along the way that they don't have to be like admitted and then they have to go in there. It just seems a really efficient, very creative way to solve a problem that's probably been around for a long time. I think it's a brilliant solution to a very difficult problem.
Yes, that is very true. Many of these calls, we likely may be able to mitigate them and get the person that needs the help into the right resource without having to go through the hospital. So, in that case, yes, it would... It's probably going to save us a significant amount of money in not having to set up a hospital for hours while waiting. That won't happen in every case, but there are going to be many cases where that is going to happen.
Well, it's kind of like a first strike kind of thing. You do the best you can. And if you can't do anything else, you can always go back to the old status quo. But this seems to be a really much more efficient way to handle things out of the gate, so.
Yeah, we're excited about it, as is the behavioral health department. So, we're hoping it's going to be a long-term relationship and it's going to help provide better services to the persons who need this kind of assistance. One thing I was looking at here is they're talking about insurance liabilities and stuff. Does any of our policies have to change for that? Or is it our policies aren't yet that... No, our policies would cover us for any law enforcement operations. And then, I'd have to go look back at the contract, but there's mutual agreements in there that would... Where the county also has to ensure their staff for their actions as well. So, it's kind of like they're usually set up as a mutual indemnification type of agreement where each entity is responsible for their own staff. And our insurance already covers any law enforcement that we're doing. So, we don't have to change our insurance. No. They're just going to add... They would have to... Yeah, we would just have to mutually advise each other of the fact that we do have the appropriate insurance.
All right. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this issue? Not everybody wants.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing else, I'd move to approve the license agreement between the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake for behavioral health staff to work out of the Lakeport Police Department Station.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item of business is to receive and file the Illegal Fireworks Police Operation Plan.
Mayor and council, I'm not going to go through all these reports. They're the same ones that I present to this council every year in May. Basically, advising you of our operational plan on how we're going to respond and deal with any or mitigate any illegal fireworks issues on the month-long period before it starts around June 17th and goes to mid-July. The only other thing I wanted to note is, as you recall, there was discussion last year about our concerns about... year about our concerns about a lot of the trash being left around in some of the fireworks use areas. We worked closely prior to last year with the event promoters of the fireworks sales, and the outcome was that everything was cleaned up, everything went very well, and we're expecting that to go the same again this year. We'll be forming the same relationship with those groups. And it was a big improvement from prior years, so we think that'll be smooth again.
Thank you.
So, I take it that those are in the areas that are not authorized officially by the City of Lakeport, but that people use? And the fact that the promoters help get those places cleaned up, that there won't be any pushback from the various shopping centers where people go down and have a good time?
That's correct. I mean, we don't authorize people to use private property, but they do take it upon themselves in those private property areas that are generally open to the public, like Safeway. But we also do ask them to, you know, just generally assist with getting the word out to also clean up our, get people to clean up our city streets, because really, the only legal place to set these up is on a city street, or in the designated area that we provide during the 4th of July celebration on July 4th. So, we do try to get the word out. And the other big thing that we get a lot of complaints on is from people from the county areas where fireworks are not legal. People will buy them here and take them into county areas, and use them in areas where there is high fire danger. So, that's a big thing for the city and us, and to get in the word out and let people know, if you're going to buy them, use them here in Lakeport, please don't take them out of the county where they're not legal. And in fact, we, the last couple of years, we've been putting very large signs at the four exits of Lakeport, to advise people of that fact. And we'll be, Public Works will be doing that, the same thing again this year.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? See a nut, we'll bring it back to council for action.
I move to receive and file the Illegal Fireworks Police Operation Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our final item, then, is City Council Communications. Margaret? Anything to report? Nothing to report. I mean, David?
Can I report?
Nick?
Just wanted to remind everybody, May 29th is the budget workshop, by 30, I believe. So, listen to everybody on May 29th.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing to report.
Chief, anything?
Just want to let you know, our new Chevy Tahoe came in today, yesterday, actually. It'll be spending another 30 days in our local emergency vehicle out there, getting all the equipment in it. Hopefully, be on the road by July 4th.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Kevin?
I've got some good news, yesterday, from our regional transportation body, Lake APC. The city and Lake APC were successful in their grant application for the 11th Street Planning Corridor. So, that's very exciting news. So, that's, you know, hopefully getting that up and running here sooner rather than later. It's got a really large public outreach component, because we know that's a pretty critical corridor, and just kind of studying the entire length, different transportation options to kind of improve circulation along that important regional corridor. That was a very exciting news. I was very happy to hear that one. And that one's one that's funded, the, it's through the Sustainable Community Development Grant Program, which has received significant extra funding as a result of SB 1. So, that's, and we were one of the recipients in getting that to work.
And Madam Mayor, since Doug's not here, I should mention that we got the final approval from FEMA to upgrade our seawall to the, that we wanted to do. So, anyway.
Thanks.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
Doug's, he's very excited he wasn't here today.
Super news. That's good enough that next time, he can announce it.
We're pretending like he didn't know.
Thank you.
Kevin, is there any update on Safe Route to School?
On the Hartley Project?
Yes.
We're preparing all the paperwork to go to the CTC at their June meeting, to get our allocation, so that we can accommodate the environmental this calendar year.
Great. Thank you. Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Spur?
Last Saturday, me and Mayor Turner helped clean up the city, and had a good time doing it. Met some new people and talked to them. So, you know, it was fun. Other than that, don't forget, Paul's got his open house on the 30th, so.
Great. Councilmember Parlett?
The APC LTA meetings that our fearless leader, Matina, Ms. Matina is running all the time. She does an amazing job over there. But I thought it was interesting that there's a lot of stuff going on between, and I think the hardest thing being on the APC is there's about, what is there, 225 different acronyms between all the different funding sources? And it just never ceases to amaze me. You actually need like a, kind of like a translation dictionary to even know what's going on. She's doing a fabulous job over there. The one thing that I thought would be interesting for all of us to know, we do have people come in periodically and complain about, you know, rate cuts and service cuts and things like that on the lake transit. And just, I thought it would be interesting for the council to know, anybody that's here today, that the latest budget report showed that the average cost per ride is $8.88, and the average fee paid by anyone is $1.56. And so, this is subsidized, you know, like almost six times. And it just amazes me that people think that even though we're doing an amazing thing through all these different funding sources to provide bus service, because I remember when there was not even a, there was a Greyhound Bus Depot over here on Main Street that would take you out of town, but wouldn't take you anywhere. And even though we are doing amazing things to provide access to all areas of the county, and get people places a couple of times a day, I mean, certain, it's not perfect, but we're doing it at a tremendous expense to someone, somewhere, through these different agencies. We're trying to do the best we can, but the people still seem to complain that they don't have a better service than they do. But I thought it would be interesting to know that the cost is $8.88, and it's rising all the time because of minimum wage, because of fuel costs, and that we're only collecting about $1.56. And students have the opportunity to ride free with the summer pass, so we're doing a lot of amazing things. And we actually are having a college program with Woodland Community College. If you buy a student body card, you get to ride free. So, we're doing a lot of amazing things with the money that we have, but I think we're lucky to have a transit system in Lake County with the economic barriers that we have. And I think it's a tribute to people like Stacy, who's been doing this for a long time. I'm just kind of a Johnny come lately on the community, on the board, but I thought you might be interested to know that. We do have Rotary Top 40 in Upper Lake tomorrow, and Clear Lake on Thursday. We're a responsive event to promote great kids in our community, and that's going to be a good thing, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Parlett. The other thing we should mention in transit is the mobility manager and the ride, what is the rideshare program called?
Pay Your Pal.
Pay Your Pal program for non-emergency medical trips. It's really taken off. So, it's allowed people that need maybe cancer treatment, but they have to go to San Francisco or Santa Rosa, and they have no way to get there. They're getting theirs now, and they're, there's more people doing better with better prognosis, because they're getting the treatment that they need.
And it's amazing, because it's almost like an Uber program.
Yeah.
They get, it's, they only get like 200 miles a month, but they get someone to drive them there, and they get a certain remuneration from it. But these people are able to do things they could never do before, and these people are volunteering and getting a certain amount of money. And we're actually getting, I think we did over 50% more miles than we actually paid for. So, it's really a great project.
It's working. It's really taking off. So, that's, yeah, it's really awesome. Let's see, next week, the Quilic High School, the schools will be out for summer, so watch out for the kids. Terrorist graduations Thursday night, and the high school graduations Friday night. And so, those little terrorists are going to be everywhere then. Give them the job.
Well said.
And tomorrow, we have Latko.
And Ava, you know?
Yeah.
Superside Ava.
The only thing I can think is, currently with Mendocino College and the Lake County Theater Company, they're having auditions for our third annual Shakespeare at the Lake. So, that's coming up. That's today, Will Dutt, Thursday, and Saturday, something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, today, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. So, that'll be another great event here in Lakeport. Shakespeare on the Lake, so look forward to it.
As you like it this year?
As you like it, with a groovy 60's twist.
Nice.
Yes.
I barely understand Shakespeare, and I barely understand the 60's, so...
Welcome to...
You're going to need to like write that good description in the handbook, and I'll read that.
We're hoping for the double, the double negative. Don't understand this, or this, so you'll understand this. I'm right there with you.
I'm hopeful. I have nothing else to report, so we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Oh, hi.
Hi. I apologize. I have never been here before.
Come on up.
Did I ever miss the public?
We did citizens input in the very beginning, but come on up.
Okay.
We're going to reopen the public input.
Okay. I apologize. My name is Ben Loato. I'm your guys' local postmaster here in Lakeport. The post office is actually going to be doing a new event on Thursday, May 31st. It's called Grow Your Business. And what the post office is targeting is helping small or even large businesses help grow their business. And we are going to be presenting services and products that we offer to help increase your business, or do whatever you would like. We're actually going to be having a specialist come from San Francisco, and spending the day at the Lakeport Post Office, offering any business around the county, or even within Lakeport, to come and get some ideas, some materials, anything they need from us as a company to help them. And I just wanted to put that out there. We're going to reach out to local media as well, and advise that any local business would be more than glad to come down. We'd love to sit with them, show them the products and services that we offer, and anything we can do as a company to help them, is what we would like to do.
Do you have a prepared flyer that we could post on our Facebook page to promote it to?
I can have that shortly. I can have it this evening.
No, but yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. If I do get it, how can I get it to that? Get it to you guys.
I'll get you my card as soon as the meeting's closed, so my email address. You can do that. That'd be great.
All right.
What time is that event?
It's going to be held from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. So, it'll be Thursday, May 31st. Most likely, we're going to have a table set up in our lobby, so anybody walking in, we can catch people who may have not seen a flyer. But again, we're going to try to help out any small business or large business with services that they offer, when it comes to advertising or shipping services they may need. So, just wanted to bring that up, and I apologize if I'm missing the public.
Not at all. That was worth it. Totally cool idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, now I mean it. Now, we're going to adjourn. Go. I did it.
I did everything.